Good evening, folks. Thank you for your patience. We're getting started just a few minutes late tonight. It is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of Tuesday, May 13th. May I kindly ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Thank you very much. For the folks at home, would you be kind enough to hand the camera over to the agenda? So we can see what we'll be discussing tonight. It's the first meeting of the month, so we take a snapshot of the finances with the supervisor's report. Then we have the clerk's report as well. We have only one or two announcements, I think, this evening. And then we'll take some public comments for about 15 minutes. On the agenda items, we are going to just discuss the Cooking Ham community's solar bids. We're gonna entertain a motion to go out and have it redid for a couple of reasons. We'll go into that at the time. We have a ministerial action, which is on the waterfront advisory committee. We must refer the coastal assessment form for consistency advice from the planning board. They are our waterfront advisory committee. We're having a continued discussion about a purchase for the highway department, a new truck. And that's all we've got for tonight. So it should be a fairly short meeting. With that being said, why don't we dive right on in? This is for the period ending April 30th, 2025. We started the period with an opening balance of $11,66,862. We had receipts of nearly $700,000, dispersments of $620,000 and change for an ending balance of $11,144,000. You have in your packet, board members. Budget adjustments as proposed by our bookkeeper Ann Conway. Any questions on that? Also, you have your variance report. I apologize, it's sideways on the digital screen there, but available on the town website as well. Are there any questions? Anybody have any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the supervisor's report. Christine with the motion. Second bill. All in favor? Aye. Okay, we also have the town clerk's report as well as some vouchers.
The town clerk's report for the period of April 1st to April 30th, 2025. Total local shares remitted $7,385.67. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay neuter program, $39. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $180. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, $811.33. Total state, local, total state, county, and local revenues, $8,416. And I hereby certify that vouchers numbered 33327 to 33437 totaling $285,797.77 processed in the month of April 2025 are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board.
There is a motion to accept the clerk's report. All in favor? Second? Christine, all in favor? Aye. Okay. What do we have for announcements? Rebuilding Together. So the application cycle is opening once again for Rebuilding Together. If you were here at the meeting or the last meeting before that, perhaps you heard me speak about Rebuilding Together. It's a program to assist people in our community who need necessary repairs on their homes, but can't necessarily afford them. I did a mailing last fall to a lot of the seniors in our community at the request of Rebuilding Together. They were looking for a project here, and actually they got five applications. So that's terrific news. Spread the word. If you know somebody, one of your neighbors needs... These are all free repairs, by the way. A lot of it has to do with being able to get in and out safely in a home. Entrances, handrails.
Why don't you scroll down a little bit, because it has examples?
And she, Darcy McCourt, who heads up this wonderful organization. Think of it like a habitat for humanity, except you're doing repairs, not new construction. She'd be happy to come to us again, I think, and make a presentation for the folks. But it's a wonderful program. The house that they did just a few weeks ago, it was on our repair cafe day and the armor day. So that was, what, April 26th, maybe something like that? Over on Hamilton. And they did a wonderful job. And kudos to many Central Hudson employees who also volunteered for that project and work here. Okay. I think we have one more that's at the back of the packet. I'm gonna have to leave that one until next meeting. Okay. That's all I have for announcements. Does anybody else have announcements? We're moving into Memorial Day reminder that there'll be the parade and ceremony put on by the VFW on Memorial Day morning. And everyone is welcome to join folks at the V after the ceremony in the village. Starts at the Memorial Garden, which was, as you know, donated by the Cooking Ham family years ago. All right. That's all I have for announcements. At this time, we'll take some public comments. Is there somebody who would like to make some public comments? Roxanne, if you'd be kind enough to just give your name and use the microphone if you could. I think it's on, right?
Can you hear me? Yes. Good evening Supervisor McKeon, members of the board, and fellow residents. My name is Roxanne Fisher, and I am here to express serious concerns about the proposed postal assessment form, CAF, referral to the waterfront advisory committee for the acquisition of the Red Hook Boat Club's property as listed on today's agenda. The haste with which this proposal is being advanced undermines trust in this process and disregards the best interests of our community. Let me highlight two critical issues. First, the town's justification for this action relies on outdated planning documents, some dating back to 1993 or earlier, as referenced in supervisor's May 5th letter. These documents do not reflect Red Hook's current needs, demographics, or environmental realities. Right now, the town is actively updating its comprehensive plan, supported by a $100,000 grant from New York State. This update is an opportunity to carefully assess our community's priorities, including waterfront access, with fresh data and public input. Why, then, is the board rushing to advance a major land acquisition based on decades-old recommendations before the new comprehensive plan is completed? This premature action risks locking us into a costly and potentially misguided project that may not align with the updated vision for Red Hook. Second, the amended agenda which was received today in the early afternoon includes this critical vote, and includes this critical vote, was only received early, mere hours before the meeting. The last-minute notice leaves residents little time to review or respond, eroding transparency. More troubling, the board is poised to vote on this CAF referral just three days before the public hearing on May 16th, where residents, including myself, plan to voice concerns about the boat club proposal. Why the rush to pass this step tonight before hearing the community's input on Friday? This haste fuels mistrust among residents who already question the town's process, especially given the boat club's lawsuit, lack of public budget, and the fact that even some of the board members haven't visited the site. Your accelerated timeline suggests a predetermined outcome, disregarding the public's right to a fair and open process. I urge the board to delay this vote tonight until at least after the May 6th hearing and to align any waterfront plans with the ongoing comprehensive plan update. Red Hook deserves a deliberate, transparent approach that respects taxpayer resources and community input, not a rushed decision that deepens distrust. Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne.
I'm Carrie Kittner. And Robert, you and I spoke the day after the last meeting. And then I sent a letter to the entire board recapping our conversation. And in that conversation, I asked you what the steps were, what the next steps were. And you very clearly said the next step was the public comment hearing. So I don't know why this step is now being, you know, put in. So I really, I don't have so much comment as I have questions about the process here and how we get an accurate guide to what's happening as the public. So my question to you is, Robert, you did say the next step was the public comment hearing. And then there would be, quote, "five to seven days after that" for more public comment. So, and I know this is just comments, we're just allowed to comment, but I really, my question is, I really have a question, which is, number one, when is the public comment period? Has it already started? Does it start at the public comment hearing on Friday? Is, so, which is it? Is everything that's been submitted so far part of this public comment period for this action? Can you answer that so that we know that our voices are being heard? And if they're not, if what we've said already doesn't count, then we'll say it again. And if, okay, can you answer that?
Yes. When everyone has a chance to make their comments that wants to make comments, I will try to answer all the questions in the board's room as well.
Okay. And then the next thing was is that you said that the next step after the public comment period on Friday would be the contemplation of acquisition. And it seems to me like what you're doing tonight, moving forward, is actually contemplating acquisition by giving it to this other board. So I don't understand why that's happening before the public comment period, since you clearly said that contemplation of acquisition would happen after the meeting. So those are my questions. I really hope you can answer.
Thank you, Carrie.
Hi, this is Nancy Rogers. I'm a member of the Red Hook Boat Club. And I just have one question for you, Mr. McKeon, and the town board members, hoping that you're gonna think it's fair and honest, like I think it is. I want to know how you can reassure us, the property owners of the proposed hospital takeover, that you are reading our emails that we send to you regarding this important matter. For all we know, you could just delete and not read them. How do we know for sure that you are reading them? There are many moral, ethical, and legal ramifications that cannot be ignored. I have my five-page printout here. I sent it this morning. I don't know if you all got a chance to read it, but it's right here. And because I, we want to know that if you read it thoroughly, and can you give us proof that you've read it? If what you are about to say is true, and you have read the emails, one can only come to a satisfactory conclusion, which is decent, fair, and acceptable, that you keep the Red Hook Boat in the hands of the real property owners.
Rich Ross, comptroller of the Red Hook Boat Club. Red Hook Town Council and concerned members of the community, I stand here before you to discuss an ongoing issue that is weighing heavily on the hearts and ultimately on the tax-paying wallets of the community. Eminent domain is a power granted to a local government to take private property for the betterment of the community. However, when this power is exercised without careful consideration and community input, it can lead to devastating consequences. Slow down and listen to the voices of the community. Unilateral decisions that are being made are lacking transparency and communication that we all deserve. It is quite evident that you have an idea, but there is a glaring absence of a well-thought-out plan, vision, and financial means of execution. For example, we do not know the traffic impacts that Bard College and Simons Rock will have on the quaint Hamlet Berrytown. Town council, you have not visited the site that you intend to take through eminent domain. At least, most of you have not. You are underestimating safety concerns of the Hudson River. Our club does not allow swimming. Club members with kayaks do not prefer to launch from the club site due to deep unprotected waters. We do not have a beach. A constant four-and-a-half knot current is not a force to be underestimated. We cannot launch boats at low tide due to the deep drop-off over boat launch. Remember, this was a site that oil barges offloaded bulk fuel. I recently met with a waterfront development advisor. He estimated it would likely cost anywhere in the neighborhood of $3 to $5 million to bring your intended acquisition up to New York State compliance. This is, of course, after the initial purchase of the property. Our bulkheads will need replacement within the next five to 10 years. We have begun the process of exploring replacement. Waterfront contractors recognize the Amtrak-owned bridge weight restriction of 16 tons. After proper permitting, it is known to us that we will have to bring heavy equipment to the Red Hook Boat Club site via barge and waterways. As this bridge is an important piece of your argument, are you aware of all this? Your proposed action may be well-intentioned, but you fail to consider elementary aspects such as cost, public safety, true environmental issues, and an increase in traffic that will forever change Red Hook in the Hamlet of Berrytown. Moreover, we must emphasize the current concerns of the community extend far beyond this single issue. We're grappling with challenges like wastewater management, EMS deficits, and affordable housing that have yet to be addressed. These concerns pose far greater well-being concerns than access and views of the river. In closing, I ask you to reconsider your course of action. The town of Red Hook has more important issues to deal with before taking private property from good stewards of the Hudson River. We all want to see this town thrive rather than suffer from decisions made in haste.
I'm Karen Stewart. I'm a kayaker.
A little closer to the mic, so everybody can hear.
Okay, I'm Karen Stewart. I'm both a kayaker and a powerboat owner. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments. We kayakers don't find that launching on this side of the river all that amenable. 90% of the time, we go to the other side of the river because we can enter on a river and come into the Hudson, which is a much better way to do it. The Hudson is choppy. If it's windy, it's more dangerous with currents, et cetera. So 90% of the kayakers I know would rather launch on the other side of the river. And from a powerboat standpoint, I also have many friends that have powerboats, and we go to the other side. Red Hook was just not blessed with a waterfront. The combination of the shallowness on the water on this side, the steep drop-offs, and the railroad tracks. As someone who often goes powerboating and pulls up with a lot of people with trailers, where are we gonna park? If you open it up to all of us to come rushing down there with our powerboats? I just can't imagine that is a site that's amenable to it at all. Parking is gonna be a nightmare. And where are you gonna put the trucks and the trailers at the back? Because you need a good 20 feet for each individual vehicle that comes down there. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Would anybody else like to make some public comments? Lisa?
My name is Lisa Murray. And I guess my, my first comment is, I'm shocked. I'm just shocked about this whole thing. I really don't understand how this comes about. And our town is not even apprised. Like, eminent domain is a big word, okay? That's taking somebody's property. So if you're gonna take the boat club, so are you gonna take his house? Maybe you're gonna take my house? Maybe because you like it, or you want to put a road in or something? That is a big word that you guys are just throwing around. And I personally don't like it as a non-member of the boat club. I'm just a resident. These people have owned this boat club since 1948. And they have been members there and taking care of that property. And you as a board, and I'm so sorry that the other two are not here to hear this. I hope that it's recorded so they can listen to this. Good. Glad to hear it. Because this is insane, if you ask me, all right? First of all, where are we gonna get the money to pay for this? Because you plan on just taking it? Or are you gonna buy it from them? Which one are you gonna do first? And I'm not sure how that even works. I was looking up the definition of eminent domain. And it usually says it's for roads that need to go somewhere. It says it's for government buildings. It doesn't say you take a property because you want to have river access. That's number one. Number two, we have a boat club in Tivoli. We have a boat club in Rheincliffe. Put some money into that. Tivoli is like our little sister town. There's a boat club down there. If you have all of our money, because you guys are dealing with our money as town board members, then put it in something like that. Do not go and take their property. That is wrong, okay? I don't know where this all came from, or who dreamed this up, but it's just wrong. I don't know how else to put it. And if you guys are really planning on doing this, I want to go into a town vote. I want our town members, okay? Everybody that lives in Red Hook to vote on should the town, who is also going to be paying taxes on this, because then we're gonna own the property if you take it over, right? Is that how it works? So we will be paying taxes on this property. And we will have to pay for police. We are gonna have to pay for landscapers. We're gonna have to make a bigger parking lot. We're gonna have to spend money to take down whatever to have access to the public. And we're also, just like the rec park, are gonna have to have people down there painting because we have people in our town and other towns that come to the rec park and throw graffiti all over it. Who pays for that?
What about if somebody gets hurt?
And if somebody gets hurt? So that means we're gonna have more insurance. We have to pay more insurance, which we all know all of our insurances are going up. So how much money do we have in the town budget? That's another question. How much money do we have in the town budget to buy this property? That's what I want to know. And how much money do we have in the town budget to utilize all of that, everything that I just mentioned, that we're gonna have to pay for when you decide that you're gonna buy it or take it over? Which, most of the residents here in Red Hook don't want you to do that. That's my question for the after this meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. Would anybody else like to make some public comments?
Hi, my name is Emily Mangeri. And I am really surprised by the lack of transparency that the Red Hook board members have provided to the residents regarding this project. I'm also really, like, kind of surprised that more members aren't here. And that consistently, members of past board meetings have been absent. Pertinent members to other committees that are to help make the rules and laws and help, you know, make our lives better. I have read lots and lots and lots of LWRP in the past for Red Hook and both for Tivoli. And we have, we have created, like, a special area just for hamlets, particularly the Berrytown hamlet. And everything that I've read in all of our past updates of LWRPs and everything have said that the beautiful estates that lie in our river have been kept, and they have been longstanding in history of being in the same family for generations and generations. And we kind of, we're proud of that in our LWRP. So to see this eminent domain come forth with such, like, vengeance, without even, like, so much of a word or a talk about it. I understand that the LWRP stands for Local Waterfront Revitalization. But it encompasses the entire town. Lots of things in Red Hook and other towns as well are lacking and need help. In your LWRP from the 1993, talks about how landlocked property is down at the river. No access. It was that way since 1984. It was that way since Henry Hudson discovered it. It's been that way forever. And the boat club picked that site in 1948. They became incorporated in, like, the 60s, I think. They are sewers and keepers of the river, as are all the other estates in the 16-mile Greenway Trail that you guys are so proud of. Why take a boat club when there's other properties that are in that same hamlet as well? Why, why even could you? How could you even say, "I want to take somebody's private property"? If it were your home down there, and you were feeling that way, would you be up here saying, "I want to do it. I want to take it"? I think it's, there's not a lot of transparency in the Red Hook board. The committees are, lack of notes. I don't hear a lot of public response from board members or how they feel. I also think that you guys can do better. I think you should listen to the residents. I think you should really take that into consideration. I wish you hadn't jumped the gun and gone for such a powerful, powerful use of a law that typically is used for, like, utilities and things that we cannot live without. I think that the residents all here feel that we can live without access to the river via Red Hook. There's plenty of other places. There has been and always will be. I think it's really, really unfair and harsh. And the way that you're doing it, it looks fishy, and it looks, it makes me not trust a lot of the things that go through here. And I'm really sorry to have to say that, because I've been a resident since I'm nine years old. I've lived here for 38 years. I have children here. I have family here. I have members of the boat club that are, like, have been for generations. It was built by veterans and founded by our people who came here to put their stamp on it. And for you guys to just take it away, saying that you want it for a park, you haven't considered the liabilities that they mentioned about how dangerous the river can be, about how, how would you police it? What would happen? The state of the bridge, as well as all of the other bridges in Red Hook. I think you need to put your focus somewhere else. And that's all I want to say. And I'm ashamed for you guys. I'm sorry to say that, but I do feel that way.
Thank you. We'll take a few more public comments. We do have our public hearing coming up on Friday, where everybody will speak on the matter. There was a question about when does it count? I covered that at the last meeting. As soon as the public hearing is called, as a requirement by law, any comments that come in after that point are come in after that point are part of the record. We indicated to you earlier that any comments we received related to the boat club even prior to that will be combined as part of the public record for everybody to view and including the town board.
Ronald Reinders, I'm just gonna let you know what a priority and what I want is. Red Fire Company, last year, townspeople, $460,000 budget is what they work on between the town of Red Hook and the village of Red Hook. One set of turnout gear for a fireman, $4,500 to $5,000. Got a 10-year lifespan. One tanker truck, 3,000 gallon tanker truck, is past replacement. Takes four to six years to get it. $1.5 million if you order it today. By the time that one comes in, the 1,500 gallon engine due to replace, that's $1.5 million today. God knows what it'll be. Now the ladder truck, we were forced to buy a ladder truck, the fire company, the townspeople had an obligation to supply a ladder truck for Bar College when they built their library. There was a handshake deal. Bar College gave the Red Hook Fire Company Incorporated, it's not Fire District, upwards ends at $10,000 to $20,000 a year. Guess what? The last donation was maybe four or five years ago for $7,500 bucks. As of last year, their budget was $460,000. Right now, $1.5 million for a fire truck. That's a priority. That's a need. Your wish list of waterfront property for the windows on the Hudson, can't always get what you want and it's not feasible. Support our first responders. Our EMS is dead in the whole county. The county and the towns, Robert, you know, they've been trying to put something together for EMS response. It's not from a lack of trying to get to the people. You don't have the members, EMT, the continued training that the state puts on. Our people aren't getting EMS first response the way they should be. And as of right now, you got an outdated fire truck that was due for replacement. I'm gonna guess two years ago. $1.5 million. My understanding that there's an acquisition right now, they're ordering two because it's gonna take six years to get them, that's $3 million. They can't operate. Check your taxes, folks. As of last year, it was 57 cents a thousand on your fire tax assessment, which the Red Hook Fire Company for years has been very proud because they're not-for-profit. It's about the people. That organization cares about the residents. We ask you to care about us too and do the right thing and prioritize your money, your slush fund or whatever you have for this acquisition.
Okay. Anyone else on public comments? Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Matt Donahue. My father-in-law, Pete Riley, was Commodore many, many years ago. Diane, my wife, and I spent a lot of time at the boat club when we were younger, younger as in probably 20s and our 30s. We had our wedding photos out at the boat club and it's a great place, right? I mean, it's a beautiful place, it's right on the water and it's been around forever and the people that are there are very, very kind, considerate. They work together, there's a bond, there's a special. Some have boats, some don't have boats, but it's a special social situation that I just, when I found out about this, I mean, my claim to fame is I put rock concerts on in the village of Red Hook for Heart Scrabble Day every year. I did it for 16 years and I got a lot of big name bands come in and I raised a ton of money for it and I did it for the good of Red Hook and I thought that was important. For me, it was important to Ed, the village mayor was important to Sue Crane and the town board was important. My oldest son, Chris Donahue, co-founded and started Red Hook Responds with Dan Budd. Chris started when he was a senior in his bedroom and he called Dan and said, "We gotta do something to help people out." So I'm a little, I guess I'm a little shaken up because people like that and many, many other people in Red Hook do the right thing for the right reason. And people try to make this place a great place to live, a better place, it's a great school district. I tell people all day long that there is no better place to bring up a family than Red Hook. The problem I have, it's not about whether you have the, you know, you have the legality of claiming eminent domain. To me, that's not what this is about. This is about principle. This is about why are we doing this? What's the point behind it? And I tell you right now, I think we all know in this room, it's not for the greater good. The greater good, nobody's coming in this room and saying, "We wanna go to the boat club and I can't believe, you know, we're being held out." That's not the situation. You know, we're just saying, "Oh wait, it's a gorgeous place on the river." I don't even know what's going on in the back. I mean, there might be things happening in the back and that's frankly, it's none of my business and, you know, the attorneys can figure that out, but it's about principle. What's the right thing to do? The right thing to do is to not take somebody's piece of land, whether it's private, it's a club or it's a business, just because you can. It's not fair. It's not what we're all about. You know, Rob, you know that. I know that. I don't know, I don't know you folks on the town board, but I can tell you that, you know, when it comes down to it, what you decide, it's about the bigger picture of things, you know? Do the right thing, that's all I ask. And, you know, my vote right now, in a second, is to just move on. Leave it alone, we send, pull away from it. Don't go to court because the problem with going to court, my parents, I'm not gonna go there, but it's gonna sit in court for a long time and taxpayer money's gonna be spent on the Red Hook Boat Club suing the town and the town countersuing the Red Hook Boat Club. And that's gonna sit in court, especially with federal court, for a long time. Our taxpayer money, every person out there, we're paying for that. Why? I just, anyways, please do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Okay. What do we think? We have Friday night?
You're gonna answer my questions?
Public hearing. Carrie, I'm asking if everybody wants, if everybody's had a chance to make public comments because I'll try to answer a couple of those questions. You're gonna hear a lot more about what you inquired about on Friday.
Is there curfew on Friday? Because I feel like these comments could go through until about 9:00 AM.
There was no curfew on Friday.
Okay. It might be there all night.
Well, just so you know, established well before our time, it's a three-minute time limit. If you, Lisa, I know this is your first time being here on this issue. Mind everybody, we encourage you to put your thoughts in writing because we can also remember it better. Which reminds me, Richie, I don't think I have your comments in writing and if you'd be kind enough to share that with us. But also you can be more extensive about your thoughts and it becomes officially part of the record. The record includes any written correspondence as well. So, and there will be a transcript from Friday night, but just know that there is a time limit and that was established many years ago to allow everyone the opportunity to speak, not to limit the amount of your speech.
Will there be an online sign-up or a sign-up when you walk through the door?
There will be a sign-up for people who wanna speak and you'll sign up and you'll be called in the order that you sign up.
So that night, walking through the door, you're gonna sign up kinda thing? Because I've had several of those questions.
Yes, you're gonna walk up, you're gonna sign up if you'd like to speak and you'll be called in the order that you sign up.
Okay.
All right, there'll be lots more to respond to some of your questions. I'll try to take a couple of them tonight. This is not a back and forth. If you wanted to make some public comments, but if there's some stuff that I can clarify for you tonight. I think I did on the issue of when do your comments count? They always count, but officially, legally, they count the moment the public hearing is called. From that day forward, as I mentioned to you, we are going backwards anytime there have been correspondence related to the boat club. We are going to include that in the record because we wanna consider comments that happened before the public hearing was called.
So nobody needs to resubmit?
Nobody needs to resubmit anything. If you submitted something, we have read it, it's part of the record. All of it will be considered. I think Rob Sand started out with the coastal assessment form. It's a requirement by law that we refer to the Waterfront Advisory Committee so that they can compare it to the adopted local waterfront revitalization plan as a requirement we must do. And they compare it to that plan. Let's see. Okay, when does it start?
Can you repeat the same question?
Hang on, hang on a second. Transparency, you know, transparency seems to be the buzzword for the 21st century. You know, we strive as much as we can to be as transparent as we can and it never seems to be enough all the time. I would just like to point out a couple of things. When we revised our website years ago, we revised it in such a way that you can sign up for notifications and you can be delivered to you by email or by text the day before when it's posted online. All of these pages, hundreds of pages, it's the most transparent government in the area according to one of the local newspapers. I described what we're discussing, people get to see it. We fought very hard to keep Panda so that everybody could see this camera. You can check with Panda about that. We do everything we can so that you have all the information in front of you, bring government to you. While it's great to see all of you, I can assure you, this is not typical, we have a handful of people in the audience most times. And so it's really important for people who are tied up at this hour of the evening that we send it all to them a day beforehand, that they can correspond with us, call us, drop into my office, all of you know that, and that they can watch it online so that it's as transparent as we can get.
That wasn't my question, you know, you're speaking straight to me.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, but I just wanna make sure that, again, you acknowledge, we do everything we can, but obviously, you know, folks join in at different segments of when we're deliberating or deciding or looking for input. Friday night is the night where we encourage as much input as possible, but I strongly recommend that you put something in writing by email to get your points across.
Robert, with the transparency?
Please, please, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I asked if that was everything. I'm not gonna have the back and forth. Just gonna answer a few questions and then we're gonna move on to the rest of the agenda because the public comment, the public comment period has concluded. So I wanted to try to answer your questions as best as I can.
Is there gonna have to answer my question?
I'm forgetting.
I had three.
Your other question that you don't think I've answered yet, Carrie? Okay, which is?
Which is that I asked you the order of things and you said the next thing would be the public comment period and?
The public hearing.
The public hearing. And this, what you're doing right, seems like a step that looks like contemplation of acquisition prior to the public.
We need to get back from the planning board, just like we need to get back from you, your input, we need to get back their input.
But only if you're contemplating acquisition. If you're not contemplating acquisition, you don't get it.
Carrie, again, I'm not going back and forth, okay? We're going to get the input from the planning board, we're gonna get the input from the public.
Let me just, maybe I'll make it clear. This resolution was like on the 28th when the room was full. It was a resolution that we passed to halt the public hearing for this Friday. This resolution is a ministerial process to approve or not approve, sending that CAF to the planning board, who's our waterfront of people, so they can do what they have to do. It's a different.
Towards eminent domain.
Okay. Folks, we're not gonna have a back and forth.
It's just so confusing.
That's a requirement, it's a requirement by law that we refer to that.
Wait, time out, time out. Just so maybe it makes it clearer, anything that happens west of 9G to the river, goes within a certain zoning district. And Bard College wants to build a dorm or they wanna build something. The CAF has to be done and it has to go to the planning board for consistency with state law. It's a form, you fill it out. This is a ministerial process. It's, when Bard wanted to make an application to build the Fisher Center.
We're not talking about.
No, 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 I'm talking about the piece of property that goes from 9G to the river, all of it, in the town of Red Hook. When anything is done of substance.
Within the LWRP area, we have to refer to them.
That's perfectly clear, we understand that.
So that's what this is.
But nothing, there's nothing to give to them if you're not moving forward with eminent domain.
Carrie, we are, we are asking for their input like we are asking for your input on Friday.
Well, we're asking for answers.
I just gave you the answer, Carrie. We're asking for their input.
Does anybody feel like we got an answer?
Not a good one at all. Yeah, I like the sound of course.
Next, next, folks, I'm gonna ask you to please.
This is the problem with the board.
I'm gonna ask you to please, there were questions that were posed, I'm gonna do my best to answer your questions. If they're not satisfactory, I apologize. We do our best to try to answer your questions. The question was raised about the hamlets. There was very specific language in our adopted LWRP that not only calls out the hamlets and the special character of the hamlet, but calls for the establishment of a town park in the hamlet a parrot town.
Well, there was a question about whether we read the emails and how do you know? Well, as a matter of state law, when something gets sent to us, it can't be just deleted. It's a part of the record. We do, you have to take our word for it that we read it, but it's, that's fine, you can laugh if you want. I've read every single email that's come in, even when it's come in multiple times from multiple people. I also make sure that when things are addressed to me, Bill Hamel, and I don't see it, see it to anybody else, I make sure I send it to the rest of the board and the town clerks to make sure it's made a part of the record. You can file a foil if you like and you'll see that. I can't say anything, I can't speak for the other board members, but I'm a long time, spent 29 years in public service, I read everything that comes to me, even if it's spam. That's just the law, it's the rule and I follow it. And that's what it is.
We need to move on. We're gonna have a presentation on Friday that I hope will address the other issues that you, questions that you raised on why we're contemplating. The topic of eminent domain and whether or not we'll implement that tool, we have said from day one, which was several months ago, we would like to work out a public-private partnership. We continue to say that we would like to work. Again, please, I'm asking you not to interrupt, maintain decorum, please, if you will. We still would prefer to work out a public-private partnership with the boat club with regard to this property.
I've never heard of leaving all that to do that.
We have said that and we continue to say that. There's still time to do such a thing. So, all right, with that said, we're gonna move, we're gonna move right on. And I'm sorry, Lisa, we are concluded.
Well, I asked you a question and you said that you were going to answer the question. So my question was, where is the money coming from to purchase that?
Was already answered last week. We have sufficient funds to make the acquisition. You do not just take property. It is just compensation. It is appraised and there will be appraisals on both sides and it's determined what that appropriate just compensation is for the property. Nobody gets anything at a discount.
The bottom line is all our taxes are gonna go way up, way up for this.
We don't want your money, we want our boat club.
Okay. Thank you very much for your public comments. We're gonna move on to the agenda items, please. We have, we're now on the community solar project. We did receive a few bids. There were some that were not complying because they had contingencies, so we had to throw them out. We will still be eligible and meet the timelines if we go out to rebid for another week and a half or so on that. For the folks watching at home, this is the second community solar project. If you happen to join the first one that's over by the firehouse, you are paying this year, if you subscribe to the 25-year purchase power agreement, you are paying a combined rate of 11.6 cents as both delivery and supply. Contrast that with the last 12 months of Central Hudson, for a kilowatt hour, you're paying somewhere in the neighborhood of 19 cents. So we don't expect that we'll be able to offer that type of rate once it's built, but we do anticipate now, having seen some of these bids, that we will have a nice discount that we can offer to our residents. As you know, legislation was passed in Washington a couple of years ago, the Inflation Reduction Act, which changed some of the language as it relates to rebates. So on the federal level, if you were a not-for-profit or a municipality, you weren't eligible for that 30%. That is all changed now, we're eligible. So when we look at the construction costs and we already have two grants that we've received based upon a lot of the clean energy projects, we've done 275. So, on the federal level, if you were a not-for-profit or a municipality, you weren't eligible for that 30%. That is all changed now, we're eligible. So, when we look at the construction costs, and we already have two grants that we've received based upon a lot of the clean energy projects we've done, $275,000 going towards both the interconnection study and the interconnection upgrades. We are looking at substantial rebates, all combined with the grants, 30% on the federal level. If we participate in one of those programs that offers to low mod income, there's potentially another 10% that we can receive on that. All this is to say that when these bids come in again, hopefully we'll be selecting one of them and we'll be able to offer to approximately 80, 90 more households the equivalent of most of your usage at a reduced rate. So, it was very successful, community solar number one. We hope this one will be successful as well. Unfortunately though, we are going to have to reject the bids based upon the, some of the... And I will just give you a little color on that. We had a bidder who had some contingencies based on tariffs. And you know, it sort of makes sense. I mean, there was, you know, what we've been reading and hearing. The tariff figures were going sky high, and so it'd be hard to bid on something, but unfortunately it doesn't work that way. You have to tell us what you're going to, so we had to reject. No contingencies on any bids. So, we have with us a resolution, do you know what number do we have here?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three?
Yes.
Dated May, it's dated May 12th, but really it should be May 13th. It's a resolution rejecting the bids and authorizing this solicitation of public bids for the town of Red Hook Cooking Camp Solar Project. And we had a lot of people pull, pull the plans. And we'll send out again this notice of additional time to all of them. And the resolution basically recites the size of the solar project. For folks at home, this is a little bigger than 35% of the size of the one at the firehouse. And I don't mean the one that supplies the firehouse, we have firemen here. We did get an ARPA grant for that, not an ARPA, an ARA grant for that back in 2009, I was on the town council. I think that, if I'm not mistaken, that solar supply is just about all of the electricity or at least most of the electricity that the fire company uses. The bids for the project were received and open on the 5th. We're authorizing and directing the solicitation of bids for the project with bids to be received on. And so, we were thinking that we could allow another 10 days from tonight. So, that would put us the Friday after next, the 23rd. All right, and then, let's see. Yeah, so the 23rd at 11:00 AM. Why don't we make that noon? We had that issue, right, do you know where one came in FedEx and it didn't arrive before 12?
I thought there was an email that said 1 o'clock on the 27th.
Is that what she's hoping to do, 1 o'clock?
That's what I got.
All right, I think we could do a few more days. All right, let's do that. 1 o'clock, May 27th. It'll give us, won't give us much time to review them though. Right, we have Memorial Day. 1 o'clock, May 27th, resolution 33. Change the date, please. All in favor? Is there a motion? Jacob, you wanna motion this?
Some would.
So, thank you, Bill. Chris Dean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so aye, okay. And then we have to do a bond resolution, we wanna keep the project moving. This is a bond resolution. You'll see the amounts of the project, total project cost would be about just under $2 million is what we're allowing for. We hope it'll come in less than that. And again, we have grants. We're looking at better than 30% of coming back on the direct pay from the federal government. And then obviously, we have to make those payments on the bond. We have the payments from those who subscribe to the farm. 499 KW AC, 749 KW DC.
Chris is trying to get hold of you.
I know, I'm all set, I'm all set, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a public comment on the solar farm or no?
There's no, there's not a public comment on the solar farm.
What if the town doesn't want the solar farm?
Okay, folks, I'm gonna ask you, please, we have to conduct our business. This has been a matter of discussion for two years now. I strongly recommend you sign up for notify me on the website. You'll have ample opportunity to comment on this project or any other project. This project is well on its way. We've already had our studies conducted and everything looks favorable from a financial standpoint.
I have a question, with all the lifespan of it.
Of the?
Lisa, Lisa, I'm sorry, we're not, we're not doing that. We're, we're going through our business tonight. I'm sorry. If you have questions, please come into the office, please come into the office and we can discuss all that. We haven't had the bids that we've awarded yet. And you can look at the warranties when they come in, okay? All right, we've got resolution number 33 was...
Thirty-four.
Or in 34 was the reject, 33 was the rejection, 34 is the resolution for the bond authorization. And calling out the amounts, we don't think we even need to borrow more than 1.82 for this. And we're looking at rebates north of $600,000, more like 700 and something coming from both the feds and the state, bringing the cost down to a little more than a million. We've already, like I said, have 275, so it's gonna look very favorable both for the general taxpayer base and for the subscribers to the community solar farm. Okay, so, this is resolution number 34. And who would like to, dated May 13th, who would like to make the motion?
Some would.
Jacob?
Excuse me, Chris is always trying to get hold of you.
Do you know, I have an all set.
It's been getting.
I have just an all set, okay. Second? Christine, seconds? Any further discussion? All in favor? Bill?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, we call it out, all four members voted in favor.
Christine and Jacob did say aye.
All right.
If I moved in, Christine seconded, those are ayes.
Continue discussion, the last item on the agenda before we go into attorney-client session. Entertain doing so. Well, we're gonna, let's jump around, we have our highway super here. Let's, let's go into highway truck purchase discussion. You've made a request to replace a truck, one of the aging trucks. You've identified a truck you want and three bodies that you want. We're just, if I heard me if I'm wrong, Teresa, we're just waiting for confirmation whether or not it conforms with procurement.
Yeah, I had a little back and forth with Chris and there was a misunderstanding. I think on her part about Allegiance not being Navistar is international. So, I sent her that information and I said I'd follow up. I also sent her the price list for the truck from the manufacturer showing all of the discounts from the vendor. So, I believe there's everything there, but if you wanna wait and get paper confirmation, you can. The only thing would be if the truck goes up in price or if something's not available. Right now, it takes six to nine months to get the truck. So...
There's just confirmation whether or not they, they were awarded the contract that represents this truck or, or whether or not it's something similar. And if they weren't awarded for this truck, we, we can't piggyback on that.
Understood, so, the, the, this... The thing was that the truck is sold by Allegiance and Chris pointed out that Navistar, about the contract. Allegiance is a Navistar dealer.
Gotcha.
International is a Navistar truck. So, in essence, Allegiance has the Navistar contract.
Okay.
So, you know, you can, like I said, wait.
Okay.
But we're pretty confident that this dealer, who's one of the largest dealers in the state, would stand by whatever contract they put in the quote to the town.
Yeah. Well, I think we do need to wait to make sure that complies with procurement. For the folks at home, this is a little bit in the weeds, but just so you understand, you've heard me talk about in the past that we go out to bid, we do seal bids. It's the work, it's the only way that we can guarantee that we get the best pricing for you. There is however, when you go to purchase goods or in this case, a truck, you can go through the state procurement system through OGS. They have, they award contracts to manufacturers and we can piggyback on that. Or in this particular case, there's a county. County went through a procurement process. We can piggyback onto that if the process that they went through complies with our process. Does that make sense? And so, what we're doing now is just, we're gonna, I guess, you know, talk about the truck and just see between now and our next meeting whether or not if it complies. But maybe, you know, your, your plan to finance the truck seems to me at least to be a good one. Bill?
Yeah.
You okay with that? Christine, Jacob?
Yeah.
Okay, and the truck with the three bodies seems to make sense.
Is there another meeting in May?
Yes, May 28th.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're just a matter of, you know, two weeks away, but maybe we can get that all squared away.
Yeah, I, you know, I really do try to give you advance notice and to get questions in advance of the meetings so that you can have all the information and we're ready to go.
Yeah.
Sometimes it doesn't work.
That's okay. Okay, thank you for that, Teresa. So, it sounds like we're all good with the truck as long as meets the procurement. All right, let's go on to the coastal assessment forum. Folks, we have to walk through that. We went through the EAF at our, one of our previous meetings. We'll get to our resolution later. There's a description of the proposed contemplated acquisition. Again, for the public at home, the Water Prime Advisory Committee in our municipality is the planning board and they look at it to see any contemplated action or development proposal, whether it's consistent with an already adopted local water prime revitalization plan. There's a whole series of policies and we'll, we'll go through them. I know this is rather lengthy, but it's, it's something that we need to do and we do each time. So, what we're looking at is making, with the assistance of our planner, looking at making this available for the planning board to review. And this is the consistency form and here are the answers. Development policies, it doesn't apply because this is not a development proposal. Will this perhaps encourage growth of tourism, preservation, enhance or reuse appropriate areas or structures? Will it take steps to inform the public of existing areas of historic scenic and recreational interest? Yes, facilitate the siting of water-dependent uses and facilities on our adjacent coastal waters. And there's an attachment to this. Encourage the location of development in areas with public services and facilities essential to such development or adequate except when such development has special functional requirements or other characteristics which necessitate its location in other coastal areas. The boat club site contains existing infrastructure, including water and sewer above ramp, floating docks, a picnic area.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
Will be no docks.
Thank you, who said that? No?
No docks.
No seasonal floating docks.
No, no docks.
Let's make that correction to the draft, please. No seasonal floating docks. Okay, picnic area of bulkhead and buildings used for storage and other boat club purposes. There's no expediting permit in order to facilitate the siting and development activities because there are no development activities proposed. Protection of fish and wildlife resources, introduction of hazardous waste. All structures are existing, no change in land uses proposed, no construction activities are proposed as part of this action. The proposed act, next, number nine, the proposed acquisition will substantially expand public access to fish and wildlife resources to all residents in the town. Number 10, not applicable, further develop commercial pinfish, shellfish, crustacean resources, marketing of products, not applicable. No construction activities are proposed, so therefore, number 11, flooding and erosion hazard policies. Same thing with activities or development in the coastal area. Construction or reconstruction of erosion protection structures, no construction. A lot of these were.
Richie just told you that there's gonna need construction.
Carrie, I'm gonna ask you to please not interrupt. Carrie, I'm gonna ask you to please not interrupt.
I know, but you interrupted and corrected something before.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to please not interrupt.
Correct that something again. If you're making a mistake on your.
Okay, Carrie, the important thing is that this, you know, whether this goes through or not, the, this paper, this form is discussing and focused only on the purchase of the property. Not construction, not any changes that may or may not have.
It's not accurate.
Why is it on there?
It's not accurate.
Focus and ask you to please.
So, the purchase of the property involves no construction. So, that's why it says no construction.
So, there's no part.
All structures are existing, no construction activities are proposed. Number 17, general policy. Number 18, safeguard vital economic, social, and environmental interest. The proposed action is not classified as a major action as described in the LWRP explanation of policy. In attachment A, there's more on protecting, maintaining, and increasing the level on types of access to public water-related recreation resources and facilities. Access is the subject matter of number 20. And the club site would provide public recreational access to the water's edge and would continue the recreational uses established on the site since the 1950s. It adjoins the Edgewater Estate. And it also adjoins a recrea, sorry, a residential parcel of 1.5 acres. There is reasonable vehicular access and pedestrian access. In the attachment, it talks about water-dependent and water-enhanced recreation. Policy 21A of the adopted LWRP says, undertake efforts to establish a town dock and park area or areas in Barrytown to provide public access for water-related recreation activities, including fishing and boating. This is a document that was adopted by the town. Number two, development when located adjacent to the shore will provide for water-related recreation as a multiple use. Boat club site has been fully developed for water-related recreation and such existing uses proposed to continue in accordance with the LWRP comprehensive plan and open space plan. No construction activities are important to G, which is the historic resource policy. It will protect, enhance, and restore structures. The action will conserve, protect, and preserve a site for public use and enjoyment of the town's special historic and cultural. of the town's special historic and cultural significance. It will also prevent public use of the waterfront site for scenic use that we talk about, use should purposes. That's 23A, which is to conserve, protect, preserve, and if appropriate, promote the adaptive reuse of places, sites, structures, views, and features in the coastal area. Scenic quality policies, again, not impacted, all of this, 24 through 25. A and B, because there are no construction activities proposed as part of this action. Agricultural lands policy, it's not relevant to this proposed contemplation. Water and air resources policies, same thing, no construction. And a lot of not applicables here. There's an attachment, a continuation sheet, which policy two, facilitate the siting water-dependent uses and facilities on or adjacent to coastal waters. Obviously, this property is on or adjacent to coastal waters. It has a significant river frontage. It's in the hamlet of Barrytown, contains a boat ramp. Removable docks, we'll put that with a question mark. Storage and other buildings, a picnic area, parking, and a ball net. The Red Hook Boat Club is privately owned, not-for-profit. Not-for-profit membership organization limited to 100 members and is closed to the general public. Boat club site is a water-dependent use and facility that includes approximately 0.3 acres of underwater land. The boat ramp is the only existing boat ramp in the town of Red Hook. I think there was some mention earlier of having other boat clubs in Tivoli and other places. This is not correct to our knowledge. The boat ramp is the only existing boat ramp in the town of Red Hook and the only existing ramp on the east bank of the Hudson River, between Ryan Cliff and Germantown, a distance of 18 miles. The town board has proposed acquisition of the site for public parkland to provide access to the Hudson River and recreational facilities for Red Hook's residents. Barrytown is the only location within the town of Red Hook where a public road and a bridge over the CSX. Amtrak railroad right-of-way exists with the potential for public access to the Hudson River. Creation of a public park on the Hudson River in Barrytown has been a town priority since at least 1968. You'll hear on Friday how back in 1967, the first comp line referenced the town park. Creation of a public park in Red Hook has consistently been recommended in all official land use plans prepared since that time as discussed in 1921 and 21A policies. So policy 19 is to increase the level and types of access. I think we covered that. The proposed action will protect, maintain, and increase access to and use of the Hudson River's water-related recreation resources. When it was first officially referenced, and also the Comprehensive Plan of 93, also the adopted LWRP of 1995, the Open Space Plan in 2006. It creates more public access to the state and nationally significant areas. A lot of not applicables, there's no change in the recreational land use as proposed, no construction activities, no site activities are expected to cause the generation of nitrates or sulfates. Preserve and protect tidal and freshwater wetlands, no construction activities are proposed. Policy 21, water-dependent and water-enhanced recreation will be encouraged and facilitated and will be given priority for non-water-related uses along the coast, provided it's consistent with the preservation and enhancement of other coastal resources and takes into account demand for such facilities. In facilitating such activities, priority shall be given to areas where access to the recreation. Opportunities of the coast can be provided by new or existing public transportation services and to those areas where the use of the shore is severely restricted by existing development. In the comments section, they speak about the town's official policies as described in those documents. Once again, access is hampered by the train tracks, as was previously mentioned. Land use planning has resulted in preservation and enhancement of coastal resources, and it speaks to that. Waterfront revitalization area, historic landmarks overlay, districts, the EPO, scenic corridor, waterfront conservation. And it just highlights some of the important quotes with those zoning districts and overlays. The draft updated LWRP proposes a continuation of the policy and proposed project of acquiring land of Barrytown for public access. Parkland, which is policy 21A, undertake efforts to establish a town dock and park areas, or areas in Barrytown to provide public access for water-related recreation activities, including fishing and boating. Once again, since the mid-'60s, Red Hook's land use planning statements, goals, and objectives to comprehensive plans, open space plan have evolved for the establishment of a town park area or areas in Barrytown to serve residents' need for recreational facilities, parkland, and enjoyment of these resources and surrounding area. Was early reference, the Hudson Historic Shorelines, Shoreland Scenic District. It is New York State's first scenic district that includes a side area was established under Article 49 of the ECL. The management plan prepared for the scenic district discusses the importance of providing public access to the Hudson River in Red Hook for the nationally and state significant scenic resources found within the district. Additionally, New York State's Open Space Conservation Plan also notes the importance of providing public access to the state's waterways, including the Hudson. Red Hook is a member of the Hudson River Valley-Greenway Compact for Dutchess County and the town, and by our zoning law 14344 dot 1, has adopted the Greenway Connections, which says our decision-making should be guided by statement of policies and guides where and whenever appropriate. Applicable references from three policy programs have been provided below along with LWRP's explanation of policy associated with policy 21A. The LWRP was first approved by the state in 1995, and federal concurrence on the incorporation of the LWRP into the coastal management program of New York State was obtained. There are 44 policies outlining appropriate approaches to coastal land and water use activities in the state coastal management program that's been designed to address important coastal issues by advocating specific types of actions enumerated in the summary of the program. And we've mentioned these uses, promoting water-dependent uses, promoting waterfront revitalization, protecting fishing habitats, protecting and enhancing scenic areas, protecting and enhancing historic areas, protecting farmlands, protecting and enhancing small harbors, protecting and enhancing public access. Additionally, the LWRP Section 2 Inventory and Analysis identified two sites for recreation, only two sites in the town enlisted as recreation sites. Red Hook Boat Club in Barrytown and a portion of Claremont State Park at the northern edge of Red Hook. Claremont State Park includes three parcels in Red Hook containing 36.7 acres, but all three parcels are located east of Woodsboro and are approximately 1,500 feet from the Hudson River, and therefore do not provide access to the Hudson River. In the same LWRP section, water-related uses discusses the Red Hook Boat Club site as follows. A primary private water-related use is the Red Hook Boat Club in Barrytown. Facilities are available here for docking, launching, and on-land storage of power boats, primarily for recreational use. One commercial fisherman has utilized this launch site for spring sand, which we believe to be a misspelling of the word shad. Fishing and ice boaters use it in the winter. I'm not sure ice boaters are still using it in the winter. Section 2 of the LWRP also states that facilities should be developed for launching of non-power boats directly into the river. Section 2 subsection G discusses coastal access points. The coastal access points or points of access, see map 9, represent outstanding short and long range recreational and open space opportunities. They are treated separately from the other recreation and open space areas because of their importance to waterfront in the town. In recent years, the Hudson River itself has played a relatively minor role in the life of the town primarily because of the limited public access to the river. Railroad tracks along the shoreline have severely limited safe access to the river for commercial and recreational activities. In addition, the presence of large estates boarding in the Red Hook shore, except in the Barrytown landing area, has restricted enjoyment of the vistas of the river and significantly limited utilization of land near the river to a very few individuals and groups. The Barrytown Bridge provides access to a substantial amount of privately held land in Barrytown, including the Red Hook Boat Club. Although the bridge is currently in need of structural repair, the state's pack now 30 years and maintenance for full, long-term use. A need for additional locations for public access to the river has been recognized. There is extensive interest in providing a public access site in Barrytown. Two sites have been identified, again, this is sort of repetitive. Public access explanation of policy, which is Section 3E. Opportunities for boaters who wish to fish, hunt, or observe scenic vistas need to be made to safe travel to the Hudson. Under the railroad bridges is possible only at low tide. You'll hear more about this on Friday, alternate sites, and why this proposed site is the best. Efforts need to be made to establish and develop a town dock or a public boat launch tie, launching facility in Barrytown. Two sites have been identified, once again.
You can't launch at low tide at our place either. You know, this is wrong.
At.
Saying that's the only spot. We can't launch at low tide either.
Okay.
This ramp is too deep, it's not gonna meet state code. Look it up on the web, that ramp is too steep, you're not gonna be able to use it. Plus, there's a cliff at the end of it. You're gonna have to. First time they put a public ramp there, person's gonna take that and go right off.
Both senses.
And that's, you're gonna deal with the death of a voter. Trucker gonna die.
Sir, Friday is a great opportunity to make these comments into public.
You guys gotta think about the cost of redoing all this.
Larger audience.
I think that is important to talk about now. Debt means important.
Ryan Cliff talking about debt. Look at how they put in their dock. That's what you're gonna have to do. You're gonna have to rearrange everything. You can't do it the way it is.
At the time, the LWRP was prepared. A current parcel identified as parcel number.
Use a brain.
1.58 acres in size, north of the Boat Club. Was identified 30 years ago, was taken at the time, it's no longer available again. The goal of creating a town dock or public boat launching facility in Barrytown for recreational boaters, excursion passenger vessels, and clearwater fishermen with direct access to the Hudson. Please, I'm gonna ask you folks, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave if you don't allow us to finish our business. We work for all the taxpayers, and that includes conducting a meeting.
Okay, not long.
Okay? Before the Hudson River Railroad opened in 1851 was the last time that Barrytown Landing functioned as a steamboat war. Was in the 20s. Before the Hudson, the railroad opened in 1851, Barrytown was one of the few places where town residents could gain access to the Hudson River. This was because of the river shoreline, which had limited deep water access for boats elsewhere, and because of the more than one dozen great Hudson River estates. There's a history, if you all have not read, the history of Red Hook by Claire O'Neill Carr. I recommended it. In the town of Red Hook, it goes on to talk about these great estates and the hamlets, and the fact that this is a nationally recognized historic landmark district. Reestablishing a public access site on the Hudson River will allow town residents and others to take advantage of a location's deep water access that provides public benefits to recreational boaters, including ice boaters, hunters who use Tivoli bays for waterfowl hunting, recreational fishing, and in the future, if commercial fishing is restored due to continuing water quality improvements for water-based tourism. And this dates back to the LWRP. Protect and enhance water quality, we should work with DDC. We obviously have, we've done a lot of land protection projects along the Salt Gill. The Salt Gill empties into the Hudson River. Provide safe public access to the river. The Red Hook Boat Club is the only shoreline property in Barrytown that is currently not a residential or institutional use. Should that property become available either as a public space or by means of a public-private partnership, regulations regarding public use of the docks and water-dependent activities would need to be considered. Expand water-dependent recreation, promote public water safety. In order to effectuate the purposes and the goals of the draft harbor management plan, Red Hook will need to take on an active role in managing, monitoring, and enforcing the provisions of the updated LWRP. Once approved and as stated in the draft, LWRP as follows. Many of you followed for years, there was the effort by the oil barges to sort of anchor in the river while they waited for pricing to improve, and then they would go up and distribute the oil. There was a lot of concern within the region about the impact that that could have on the river itself. The draft LWRP document is also clear about the town's consistent policy approach to establishing public access to the Hudson River in Barrytown. Section 4 C6, the draft document states, enter into a public-private agreement with the Red Hook Boat Club. And as yet unfulfilled goal of 1995, LWRP was to provide public access to the Hudson River. Red Hook Boat Club is the only non-residential location on the town's waterfront that is easily accessed by a public vehicular bridge. The club has a boat ramp, boat storage facilities, picnic tables, and could provide some parking space. The Boat Club is currently a members-only private club. The town should discuss with the Boat Club the possibility of opening the site to the public on a regular basis. Improvements to the site may be necessary. Finally, Heron Point is a small and narrow land, and it talks about, for folks who are familiar, it's the northern tip in Barrytown, it's quite frappy, you'll hear more about that property. There's no parking there on Friday as part of the presentation. Section 4A, proposed land and water uses illustrates the proposed waterfront revitalization area and land use plan, and here's a map. It goes along with those policies, the zoning districts that were in place at the time. The first proposed public project identified in Red Hook's LWRP is a feasibility study for establishment of a public dock landing area and mini park in Barrytown. And LWRP discusses the public need for such a public park as follows. And LWRP discusses the public need for such a public park as follows. It also references, I think, a recipe in this description. Proposed public and private projects. It will be mentioned in all this, but the LWRP provides the town of Red Hook, excluding the diligently with the opportunity to establish objectives and specific projects and implementation steps as part of its planning and development process to enhance the scenic and historical qualities of the town. Issues of concern follow for the following areas applicable to the proposed action. Once again, provision of public access, promotion of tourism, compatibility, future development, linkages for recreational areas. Once again, listed is the establishment of a public dock landing area and mini park in Barretown. There's discussion about the only public boat launching site in the unincorporated area of the town are the ones that are located in Tivoli North Bay portion of the state nature and historical preserve, the National Estuarian Sanctuary and Research Reserve. To research the Hudson River, a boater must go under a railroad bridge at slack tide. It would be, however, desirable to create a town docking area in Barretown with direct access to the Hudson. And they talk about a parcel that is adjacent to the Boat Club as well. Nineteen sixty-eight Red Hook Comprehensive Plan, there's reference to it, physical character of the area. You'll hear more about that as they compare sites on Friday, Tivoli, other sites in Barretown as well as it relates to sea level slope. The first Town of Red Hook Comprehensive Plan was prepared back in sixty-seven and sixty-eight with the villages and the hamlets. And it talks about the low density and the character of the community. It also references the deep water that occurs close to the shore in the vicinity of the village of Tivoli in Barretown and near the southbound line. Talks about how the depth varies. Talks about some of the history of the property. Some of you have already started speaking with folks about the history. There are access points to the river at Astor Point, Bruger Island in Tivoli, and you'll hear about why those properties are not able to be used for these purposes. The current Comprehensive Plan talks about the policies preserving the character, inventorying resources, the Hudson River front. They mention those same places prevail in Tivoli Bay, Hammond in Barretown, and the village of Tivoli. Tivoli has their own LWRP. It's available online. You can take a look at projections for, you can look at the erosion, substantial erosion to the property that Tivoli currently owns, and their projections for when the tracks will have to be raised. A non-functioning grade cross, grade crossing exists on Bruger Island Road since the railroad bed has been raised heavily above the level of the road. The comp plan has an official policy to promote the development of publicly accessible open space and recreational opportunities for all age groups, consistent with the town's open space reservation, land use, and transportation objectives. State access in Tivoli Bay, the canoe launch is not accessible to persons with physical disabilities due to the challenges of the site. The canoe launch also does not provide usable direct access to the Hudson River for paddle boaters, such as canoeist, kayakers, and small rowboats because of such access only available at boat time due to railroad crossing. Waterfront conservation policies and recommendations are discussed in the plan as a legal policy basis for preparing legislation, carrying out programs that either regulate or otherwise impact land use and development activity. Barretown is singled out in the town as follows. Preferred use within the waterfront conservation area is restricted to passive and water-dependent recreation and to planned extensive open space uses, which provide little disturbance to the natural environment. Excuse me. Consideration should be given to the development of the Hudson River parks in Tivoli and Barretown to provide the town's people, and this is their quote, not mine, windows on the Hudson, and to the creation of a continuous trail network along the town's substantially undeveloped Hudson River front to extend the concept of these windows to that of a corridor.
That's a good reason to take it.
The village of Tivoli owns two parcels of land in their waterfront revitalization area consisting of a one point oh nine acre parcel on the Hudson, which can be seen in the aerial. A second parcel of one point three acres is located east of the track, and so it is not located on the Hudson River. The width of the one point oh nine acre parcel wedge between the Hudson and the railroad is approximately sixty feet wide. We'll get a look at what that looks like today. Most of it has a railroad line. Tivoli has designated the parcel for a waterfront park and has developed plans and planning studies on the feasibility of access to the future park. The village recognizes the challenges for developing a public park, which involve feasible methods for crossing the railroad tracks with an pedestrian overpass and an act grade crossing. They've been told they have to have an overpass. Both are being investigated by Tivoli, but an act grade crossing for public use appears to not be feasible based upon the statement from the village's website. Their purchase agreement for them requires the village to build and maintain a fence to be deemed adequate by CSX and to create a lock gate at the crossing. Tivoli has proposed a pedestrian overpass crossing to serve its waterfront park project within its twenty twenty-three draft LWRP document. Under these circumstances, it appears likely that public access for motorboats and sailboats in Tivoli may not be feasible. In addition, the sea level rise maps prepared for Red Hook's waterfront revitalization area indicates that Tivoli's waterfront park may be subject to sea level rise in the near future. In addition, similar to the Tivoli Bay's canoe launch, the proposed Tivoli waterfront park, if successfully developed in the future, may allow for launching of rooftop boats only, but not trailable, trail overable, I'm not sure that's a word, trailerable boats. The draft LWRP document recognizes the limitations of the waterfront park site for future use at page thirty-four, where it states, the Hudson River is at sea level from New York City north to the Federal Dam in Troy, so the river will rise at the same rate as the Atlantic Ocean in a scenario of rapid sea level rise. Those levels increase to five to nine inches by the twenty twenties, which we're in now, fourteen to twenty-seven inches by the twenty fifties, twenty-five to fifty-four inches by the twenty eighties, and forty-six to seventy-one by twenty-one hundred, enough to flood and erode Tivoli's proposed waterfront park.
You understand we're at the same sea level.
The rail line running through the village and lap at the doorsteps of the waterfront community of French Street. Scenic Hudson's online sea level rise mapper shows the potential impacts of increasing sea levels based upon the New York State's official projections. For the year twenty-one hundred, a potential seventy-two inch rise in the Atlantic Ocean sea level has been officially adopted. The map developed to show the impacts of such rise in Tivoli can be found on the following page. The map shows that virtually the entire parcel on the Hudson River could be inundated by sea level rise by twenty-one hundred. The Red Hook Boat Club site is also expected to be subject to sea level rise by twenty-one hundred, but due to the steeply sloping topography of the site, may accommodate a significant projected sea level rise by that date as shown in the map on the following page. Here's the projection. It's not really translates well in black and white, but this will be available on Friday in color, and you can take a look at that. Here's Tivoli, and I wish it were a little bigger. Let me see if I can blow it up. I think we're going to get better, you're going to have better images on Friday and may have it in this document as well to show you. But suffice it to say, they have so much erosion that they had to go out and get a grant just to stabilize what little they have left. Okay, we're now at the Open Space Plan adopted two thousand and six, developing conjunction with the villages, identified catalog and categories to arise these areas, set goals and priorities, and recommend ways to protect enough open space to ensure controlled development, solid tax base, and the type of community in which local residents want to live. The Open Space Plan identified priority water resource, open space areas, and discussed the Hudson River as follows. It is the Red Hook's community's most important and most distinctive natural feature. The protection and preservation of its waters, its tributaries, its shoreline, its fish and wildlife, its recreational potential, and its historic and cultural qualities are paramount on any list of community priority. Existing and proposed waterfront access points in Red Hook that were inventoried include the Red Hook Boat Club in Barretown, a private club for docking, launching, and storage of power boats, page nineteen. The Open Space Plan also identified the Barretown Landing Parcel noted above, which I believe is the one that existed, the previous old Barretown Hotel just north of the Boat Club property. The Mid-Hudson Historic Shoreline Scenic District Management Plan also goes into, which was prepared by New York by the Heritage Task Force for the Hudson River Valley in nineteen eighty-three, identifies the Red Hook Boat Club property as contributing to the scenic quality of the district. It states, there are a number of smaller park and recreational resources in the district that contribute to the area's scenic quality, the public green at Anandale, the waterfront park at Cheviot, and Rhine Cliff, and some private facilities like the Boat Club and adjacent open space at Barretown are included in this Mid-Hudson Historic Shoreline's Scenic District Management Plan category. It also discusses Barretown and its potential for public access. In its discussion of tourism and recreation as related to the scenic district, the management plan states, the Hudson River acts as the major artery, a role that is enhanced with increased pleasure boating on the river and the expansion of excursion and sightseeing cruises. However, lack of sufficient physical public access for boaters and others lessens its role in developing access to many of the scenic resources. As river traffic grows, the facilities at Norrie Park will have to be supplemented by other public docks, anchoragees, and launch ramps at Rhine Cliff, Barretown, Tivoli, Cheviot, and Germantown, and at the Mills and Claremont State Parks. That's on page one forty-eight of that plan. A major finding is that expanded public access is considered essential if the district's scenic resources are to be fully understood and appreciated by the public. Organized tours and expanded use of existing parkland, especially the Tivoli Bay's area, can accommodate increased tourism and recreation in the district. A well-coordinated program of tourism promotion can maximize economic benefits of expanded public use while protecting and enhancing the resource base. Local municipalities should consider seek the future coastal management program monies to facilitate the improvement of such public access sites. New York State has its own Open Space Conservation Plan. Program was established in nineteen ninety. The program, while designed primarily for state purposes, has an established principle to work in partnership with other levels of government to achieve the state's land conservation goals, those enshrined in the ECL. It's periodically updated. It was last time, as I recall, in twenty sixteen. The Open Space Conservation Plan recognizes the challenges of providing public access to the state waters, including the Hudson River. It states, fishing and boating are well-established means for citizens to get back in touch with the natural world. Given the fact that the public access to the waters is not guaranteed, and the availability of waterfront property for public access projects is limited, we must focus on developing new public access to waters and areas that are currently private, improving access on waterfront lands. The state currently owns and modernizing existing public access sites. In addition to ramps and hand launching facilities for boats, efforts should be undertaken to provide fishing piers and other improved shore fishing opportunities for people without boats. The lower Hudson Valley region policies include a fiscal policy recommendation, which is that public access is critical to the quality of life and health of all New Yorkers as well as the economy. Protected land provides opportunities for hiking, biking, camping, fishing, hunting, birdwatching, and of course, you know, we are the leader in the Hudson Valley in land protection. The Red Hook Boat Club is within designated landscapes of local, state, and national significance, including the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District, Mid-Hudson Shoreline Scenic District, and the Estates District Scenic Area of statewide significance, which is Barretown Subunit D eight. The Ulster North Scenic Area of statewide significant. Turkey Point joins the State's District to the west. There are significant scenic resources of the river and the mountains. The Boat Club site and areas also within the Greenway and the Hudson River Valley National Heritage Area. The Hudson River is a protected river subject to the Protection of Waters Program and is designated in the two point three seven acre area of the river as an A stream. It's classified. All the streams we have in New York State are classified. This is an A. One of the highest water quality classifications in the state's Protection of Waters Program. Red Hook is a member of the Greenway Compact, it's Dutchess County Greenway Compact. It was incorporated into the local law back twenty-five years ago. A new zoning section was created for this purpose. Greenway connections, policies that help to guide our land use principles. Five specific policies called Greenway Criteria. One of the five policies addresses public access and heritage environmental education as the basis for attaining the goal of a Hudson River Valley Greenway. The Greenway Act states that it supports a cooperative planning process to establish voluntary regional contacts to further the Greenway's recommended criteria, including public access to the Hudson River, includes the ability of Greenway and the compact communities to find for funds available from the state for capital program matching grants from the council and the conservancy, recreational facilities, the reacquisition of land, waterfront projects, to acquire land for public access to the Hudson River or to protect river resources. Thus, the Hudson River Valley Greenway is a policy to the supportive of increasing public access to the Hudson River. Red Hook states in its zoning law that the town should be guided by these policies. Other potential public access sites in Barretown, and you'll hear more about this on Friday, as I mentioned, there are a total of nine parcels of land in Barretown on the riverside of the... of the railroad tracks. This section goes into those parcels. I would just point out that some of the acreage that's listed includes underwater lands as well. We talk about Edgewater, we've mentioned before, which is now referred to as the Richard Hampton Genret Foundation. There are no public policies in Red Hook's land use plans that would indicate any town policy to acquire the Edgewater Estate in Barrietown. The cost of acquiring the site would be financially prohibitive to purchase it, and maintenance of the site would likewise be cost prohibitive. The site would provide no public recreational access to the Hudson River for boating and other similar recreational activities. Folks, there are, I need people to be able to hear this because they're going to watch it.
We can't talk amongst each other, we're interrupting you.
There are no public policies in Red Hook's land use plans that would indicate any town policy to acquire the Edgewater Estate, Edgewater Estate Site in Barrietown. The cost of acquiring the site would be financially prohibitive to purchase it, and maintenance of the site would likewise be cost prohibitive. The site would provide no public recreational access to the Hudson River for boating and other similar recreational activities since the Edgewater shoreline does not possess a deep water access point, and there is no existing infrastructure that would be usable for public recreational activities. Edgewater is an important contributing estate to the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District. The Richard Hampton Genret Foundation exists to provide a not-for-profit public service that attracts tourism to the town for those interested in historic preservation. The foundation states its purpose, and I will just refer you to the language here, which refers to the historic nature and the architecture of the property. The Town of Red Hook is not a provider of educational services, nor does it have the capacity to manage, maintain, and serve the public with historic preservation services such as those provided by this foundation. The other Barrietown parcels on the riverside of the railroad tracks consist of a 0.47 acre parcel with a single family dwelling accessible from a private road, 1.1 acre parcel with a single family dwelling accessible from a private road, a half acre parcel with a single family dwelling accessible from a private road, and a 1.5 acre parcel with a single family dwelling accessible from Barrietown Dock Road that adjoins the boat club site to the north. An undeveloped parcel of 4.2 acres containing almost half of which is underwater is also located in Barrietown north of Dock Road, but this parcel lacks access to a public road. This latter parcel also comprises most of Heron Point discussed above. There are no other land areas in Barrietown with access to the Hudson River where a town dock and park area or areas could be established within the town. So that concludes the 26 pages, and you'll hear more about these policies, you'll hear more about the parcels. Reminder for the folks at home, our planner, who's been our planner for a couple of decades, just happens also to be a boater along the Hudson, but more importantly and maybe more pertinent, he used to work for DEC. He was the individual who was tasked with coming up with the comprehensive plan for river access up and down both sides of the Hudson River. So he can perhaps share insights certainly that we would not be able to because he was the expert in that area. Okay, at this time, folks, that's, I'm sorry.
When will you support, when will you send this to the planning board?
As soon as we vote on it.
Okay, and will they have a public hearing on it?
Yes, they will. Well, they have a public hearing, I don't know they'll have a public hearing, but you should pay attention.
It'll be at a public meeting.
It'll be a public hearing, as they always are. Once again, this is my PSA, sign up for notify me. Keep hearing that word transparency. If you sign up for notify me, you will have every piece of paper we discuss before we discuss it. Okay, with that being said, I think we made the one modification there on page 26. You had a, just a grammar thing, I think, that you mentioned.
On the resolution.
Okay, on the resolution itself, okay. Before we get to that resolution, anything on the policy? I think it's pretty comprehensive, and I think what we need to do is when we entertain this motion, we'll be sending it over to the planning board for their input. We send it over with the FDAF and any other pertinent documents, and we'll get all the documents from Friday as well, and we'll share that with the planning board so they have the full complement of all that information. Okay, do you, at this point, do you want to get to the resolution?
Yeah, I just want to point out.
Hang on one second, let's get there, if we will. Okay, so we are right here. Deanna, I apologize, we're at 35 and 36 now.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. All right, so, what?
In the very first line, it says.
Oh, we've got a redundancy.
Yeah, it says.
Can we make that change? Is considering, that's strike, is the repetition there, is considering?
I'm retiting that, and then the first line in the next paragraph where it says, has and adopted, I think it's supposed to be and adopted.
Okay, so we have a couple typos, one is the repetition, is considering. Let's entertain a motion to approve resolution number 35 as suggested.
It has and adopted.
And adopted.
We just corrected that, Bill raised that just a second ago.
As modified, so we're taking is considering and taking the D out of and. Who wants to move resolution 35? Bill? Is there a second?
Second.
Jacob?
One's on it.
Any further discussion? Okay, so, all in favor? Aye. Christine, aye. Okay, so we will send this off with the FDAF and any other pertinent information to the planning board. Folks, I want to thank you for coming tonight, sharing your thoughts, and we'll see you just in a short 72 hours or less on the matter that you are here for. Stay healthy at this time, and thank you at home for joining us. Please, once again, notify me, sign up for things you're interested in. At this time, I'd like to bring the motion and we go to the turnip client.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone, thank you.